Good evening. I'm Mayor Dean Brooke, and I'd like to welcome you to the June 2 virtual City Council meeting. I'd like to begin this evening with a roll call. We have a roll call, please.
Councillor Batim. Councillor Noseworthy.
President.
Councillor Youssef.
Here.
Mayor Protem Baxter.
Present.
And Mayor Broke.
Here. Thank you very much, Ben. With that, I'd like to ask our councillors to identify any actual or perceived conflicts of interest for any of the topics we have on our schedule this evening. Hearing none, I will move on to public participation. I'd first like to read a brief statement, given the circumstances of the nation today regarding George Floyd. We prepared this with the interim city manager, myself, and representing City Council. The city of Durango is a community that has always supported each other, and we have seen that to be particularly true during these unprecedented and difficult times. Most of us cannot begin to understand the depths of suffering and anger caused by the inexcusable actions in Minneapolis. We recognize that Durango is a diverse community. We have a history of assuring that law enforcement is applied in our community in a fair and equal manner, no matter the circumstances. Now, more than ever, we must look inward and then diligently reassure that each and every person in our city is treated with respect and dignity they fully deserve. We stand with the community and those who are exercising their rights to peacefully protest across the country with a voice that demands that we do better as a nation. Our hearts are with the friends and loved ones of George Floyd, and we grieve with them over the painful loss of a son, father, family member, and a friend. I'd like to thank the peaceful protesters that held a vigil Friday night. It was very, very interesting in our park and marched down Main Avenue. And I'd also like to thank Chief Raymer. I truly believe that our city Durango police officers, veterans, and new recruits alike have been trained appropriately and adopted a culture of civility and respect under your leadership, chief. Thank you and all of our police department for demonstrating behavior that commands the respect you deserve from our community. Thank you. With that, we'll move into public participation. And I'd like to just comment about our new process here, which is virtual communicate public participation. And we will now hear public comments on any specific agenda item. In this case, just public participation. To keep the moving meeting along, we are limiting comments to three minutes. You will be muted once you reach that limit. And even if you are in the middle of a sentence, please use the raise hand function if you're using the Zoom application to indicate that you would like to provide a comment. And then Mitchell will let you in. If you are calling into the meeting using your telephone, press star nine to raise your hand. Our moderator will announce the next person to speak and will unmute you at that time. Please start by stating your first and last name and your home address for the record. Be advised, this is a live television broadcast. Your video camera will show up when you speak, or if you dialed in using your telephone, your phone number will be displayed. With that, can we have the first participant? Mitchell?
Hi, everybody. My name is Mitchell Carter. I am your moderator this evening. At this point in time, if you are here to give comments during public participation, please use the raise hand function within Zoom. We do have a list of attendees, but I do not see anyone raising their hands. So we'll just give it a little bit more. Oh, we have our first one here. I'm allowing Victoria to speak, so three minutes starts now. And you may need to unmute yourself, Victoria.
Can I start three again?
Yes, there you go.
Thank you. Victoria Schmidt, 1001 East Fifth Avenue. I wanted to speak on two things. One is public meetings. Right now, it's important to meet face-to-face with residents who are struggling and who you are representing. And COVID is not running rampant in our community. However, fear and confusion around regulations is running rampant. Fortunately, the state is on a roll to issuing guidance this week for gatherings and public spaces, so hopefully with these coming out, public meetings will be held actually in the public again very soon. With respect to the mask order, the narrative has become that the businesses wanted it. But in fact, the council made the decision before there was any survey results from the businesses. Thus, how do you know whether the business that expressed support did so that because they were actually in favor of the mask mandate? Or did they do it because they were afraid to express opposition to an order that was already in the works that would threaten their business license? Beyond lack of public input from the business community for the mandate, the city has, and to my knowledge, has had no official health recommendation for the order. San Juan Basin Health, who was in attendance, did not directly recommend it, and the Centura report that was cited in the meeting did not recommend it. With the order, the city has interfered with the business's ability to evaluate what is suitable for their conditions, and it has put businesses into between a rock and a hard place with customers who expect them to enforce a mask and HIPAA laws that could result in lawsuits if they do. People have been going to grocery stores, Walmart, being on the trails throughout this entire thing, and we've had zero deaths. COVID is not rampant. It's almost nonexistent in our community. This is like, you know, a fairy tale that we're talking about.
One minute left.
Okay, thank you. So it's not surprising that we haven't seen a lot of issues with COVID, because we've got great space between us, we've got fresh air, we've got sunshine. These are the factors of help, not masks. As a matter of fact, the way that people use masks in this community is not at all in line with what CDPHG recommends and is on their website right now. So my request is that you rescind the order, and that anyone who is in favor of keeping the order clearly articulate your rationale. Thank you.
Thank you, Victoria. If there is anybody else who would like to make comments during public participation, please raise your hand now. I am not seeing anyone else raise their hand, Mayor.
Very good. Thank you so much, and thank you, Victoria. And Victoria, if you ever want to have a face-to-face on our Common Street here, I'd be glad to... I'll be walking my dog in about an hour and a half, so come on by, and we could have more fruitful discussion. And we may have... We'll be talking about this a little bit later on, probably in reports and actions, as well as to the face mask ordinance. With that, we have... We're moving on to proclamations and presentations. Review of the 5.1 is review of preliminary data relating to the May sales tax report. So maybe we have a sales tax report, please.
Good evening, Mayor, members of City Council. My name is Devon Schmidt. I'm the acting finance director for the city of Durango. I am going to share my screen out here quickly and provide you, as promised, with a update on the sales tax for May. So we actually had a very surprising and positive actuals. And so what I wanted to provide, that as of June 1st, preliminary city sales tax represents a 15% reduction for May collections. And so that's based on April sales. These are the same projections as previously presented, except that May reduction overall was previously listed at a 70% decline, and the actual preliminary numbers represent a 15% reduction. So I wanted to make a note that, you know, these numbers are preliminary. We collect our sales tax, that's due on the 25th of each month, and so we do have some numbers still rolling in, but we wanted to provide numbers live as they're coming in. This is very positive for the city, because this changes our overall decline to 22% and $6.8 million, $4.3 million for the general fund. And so it's very, very positive that we are actually seeing this over what we had previously anticipated. So I wanted to provide that update. I also wanted to update council on our city of Durango sales tax deferrals. This far, we have 49 requests for sales tax deferrals. Nine businesses do not qualify under the outline of the order. This will continue to remain in effect 90 days after the city is no longer in the emergency order, and we have $50,000 total in deferral to date. And I don't have a slide on this next topic, but I did want to let council know that to date, we have just around $17,000 in costs related to the COVID-19 pandemic costs. So that's city costs related to that. So just a very brief and quick update for you all. You know, this information is coming in, and we're trying to keep council updated as quickly as possible. And so I would be happy to take any questions if that would be appropriate at this time.
Councillors, any... This is great, relatively great news, as great as it can be at this point, which is not surprising, given the activity that I've seen in the past couple of weeks especially, but also the activity for essential services prior to that. So any other questions of Devon at this time?
My question would be, is Amber, are you going to provide any more detailed information, cash flow reports, revenue expenses later in the city status? Or is this the extent of our financial conversation?
This evening, this is the extent of the conversation. We have... The one of the folks in our finance department was on vacation last week, and we are still working with the Adams Group related to our financial statements. So I don't have any additional information to provide this evening, but we'll have an additional update for you next week at study session.
So at this study session, will we be getting cash flow reports and basically profit and loss statements with impacts on reserve funds for all the funds?
Devon, are we good on that?
Yes, Councillor Protem Baxter, we should have all that information for you at the next study session. We're going to try and include our main numbers. You know, we're trying to keep you guys updated as quickly as possible and have been getting some really good feedback from council and the Strategy and Long-Term Finance Advisory Board. So just trying to provide updates as quickly as possible, and then just the information that council would like to see. And I think Melissa was going to provide, I would imagine, provide some updates later on the Strategy and Long-Term Finance Advisory Board outcomes, so.
So I just would like to suggest that it's essentially five months into this year, and we don't have a profit and loss statement for the general fund or any of the other funds that's been presented to the public, and we don't have a cash flow. So I'm concerned, and I think that this information is required in order for staff and city council to make good management decisions and policy decisions. So I would... I believe that this is an essential service of the city, so I would like you to consider that concept of it being an essential service, because without this kind of information, we can't make good decisions, staff can't make good decisions, our Strategy and Long-Term Finance Committee can't make good decisions, our advisory boards, the dedicated sales taxes will be struggling with making good decisions. So the concept that this is an essential service that the city provides is something I would highly suggest that we look at in the same vein as some of our other essential services.
We will have something for you at the next study session, so next Tuesday, we will have something. It may not be exactly what you're looking for, and we'll go from there.
Well, I guess what I'm saying...
It could be exactly what you're looking for, it could not. I just want to let you know that we will give you what we have, and then we will take feedback from that point.
So whether it's exactly what I'm looking for or not, for me, is not the question. The question is, is it the information being provided for us to make good, informed decisions and choices about policy and the expenses, for example, that we're cutting? Because if we're seeing that our revenues indeed are not dropping as fast as we expect them to, or as much as we expect them to, possibly we're doing too much expense cutting. So it goes both ways, and I think that this is an essential service that the city needs to provide to staff and city council, as well as the advisory boards in order to make decisions.
Okay, so we will have those balance sheets through April, like through the end of April. We don't have main numbers yet, because it's not going to be ready for your review at the Tuesday meeting.
Sure. So what we talked about is that you essentially have the revenue portions already for May. You have estimated, or at least fairly accurate, because that was what was just presented tonight. And we've talked about the concept that in reality, expenses are pretty much evenly spread across a year. So essentially, 1/12 of our budgeted expenses, or what you see as a reduced expense, would be applied for each month. And that would give us a fairly accurate estimate of what our expenses are, because you probably have through March, actual expenses. I think you actually have through April if the...
Through April.
Right? So you have the actual expenses. So the only thing you would be estimating would be May to compare with May's revenues. So I just think...
We'll have that for you.
Yeah, so.
I have a question for the interim city manager. Oh.
Don't go ahead, Barbara.
Thank you, thank you. So Amber, if I look at this, and this is great news on the reduced reduction in the sales. If I look at this and the significant model scenario we used, which the significant effort was going to show a $7.3 million reduction in expenditures, granted that if we follow Councillor Baxter's comment, you may be pulling some people back from furlough in the finance department, but 7.3, you're predicting 6.8, I think it was. So right now, if this holds true and doesn't get any worse, we may have done some of the initial hard work of the reductions. And the question I have then is, when do we actually start looking at slowly easing in some of the projects that we have put on hold? I think of everything from, you know, the public art program, they're not getting their... the public art taken care of, that's a small amount of funding, but... So what is your anticipated schedule? Recognizing we've got moving targets, but when we might anticipate discussions around adding some things that we pulled away back into the budget?
That's a great question. And the way that I'm looking at this with our staff is, the first item that I would like to put back in would be to reduce furlough, because at this point in time, trying to get all of the work done with the additional work that's come from the constant change of the pandemic is extremely challenging. So the first thing that I would be recommending to council would be showing you that we have the revenue to go back and continue the expenditure on our staff. So adding back in staff hours, so reducing the furlough. And then all of those items that were deferred will be coming back to council, because we deferred them, so we put the money back into the fund balance. So each of those projects will be evaluated one by one, and depending on what the funding source is and what the staff capacity is for implementing those projects and council's priorities for the projects, then we can start moving forward with that.
Thank you. And one more question along the line of anticipated expenses. Any sense of reopening of either the rec center or some of the scheduled youth programs, and how that would affect our projected expenses and the timing of that? Again, to back Councillor Baxter's question, how that would affect the cash flow going through, particularly in summer months?
So I was going to speak a little bit about this on my manager report, but I'll do it now. So we are looking at, with the governor's draft guidance that was recently released, we have until tomorrow at noon to provide public comments, so the community can provide public comment on that guidance. And that guidance does include recreation center pools, outdoor activities, et cetera. And so what we're looking at is kids camp or our game time program. To start that up, we'll be looking to start that up mid-June to the end of June, so we'll be kicking off. We're going to be asking the community members to go onto the city's website on the recreation homepage, and they can sign up for those programs. So anything that was the second session for the summer, we'll start phasing in all of those programs per the guidance that is adopted and released with the next order from the governor, not from the city, but from the governor. So those will be rolling out. We're working with finance and looking at... The recreation programs are at least 90% cost recovery, and in my conversations with Kathy, we're moving forward to looking at how do we do 100% cost recovery on those programs so that it is running at 100%. At this point, the 90% is what was budgeted. So as we have revenues that come in for the programs, we're still balancing how many programs we open and how we open them. There may be an impact, depending on how many... Let's just use game time, for example. Game time kids, we can enroll with the certain numbers of councillors or chaperones for those programs, childcare programs. So we're still in process of looking at how do we ensure that we have that 90% cost recovery so that we can roll the program out and still hit our budget targets.
Thank you, Amber. It's important to know that the governor's draft order came out yesterday, and there are two days of comments. Particularly important for the city of Durango is the... Well, it impacts the train as well as rafting companies and guide services. So as the river is diminishing quickly, we'd like to have... It could be implemented as soon as Friday, June 5. That's not a given, that's a forecast, that in fact, the rafting companies might be able to open under, with certain restrictions, and those are what are being debated right now, on the 5th of... That issue, the order would be issued on the 5th of June.
Dean, can I add one more item, please?
Sure.
So we have been receiving a number of phone calls related to playgrounds, and this just relates to the order. So the governor's draft guidance, I think it's critical to understand that it is draft, and at this point in time, per the safer-at-home order, playgrounds are not open. However, the draft guidance states that playgrounds will be opened, and the city is prepared and ready to take the caution tape off of those playgrounds and post new signage. At this point in time, with the draft guidance, it says 10 kids can be playing on a play structure at one time. And so as soon as that final order drops, we'll change the signage, whatever the order ends up being. It could be 10, or it could be something different, and then our playgrounds will open. So it's not the city closing the playgrounds because the city thinks the playgrounds should be closed, it's we're following the governor's guidance, we're excited to see this new order, and we're excited to see that we're continuing to open up our economy and our community and our open space and our programs and our playgrounds. And so as soon as that order is final, we'll be moving forward with opening up the play structures.
Exactly. Thank you. And then I think it's fair to say, too, that in our policy group meeting with... Where we reviewed the governor's order yesterday, both Commissioner Lackel with the Le Platte County and myself were effectively going to lobby during this two-day review period to make the rafting companies as least restrictive as possible, so they can have the maximum amount of folks on their boats, given with appropriate social distancing and the other safety measures that have been described statewide. So that's... If there's anything else we think of between now and then, too, that is important for the city to know, there's confusion of what the city of Durango imposed. The only thing that city of Durango has done is special, is the mask ordinance. It's different than any other community in the state. And so as was noted in public participation, there were some inaccuracies there relative to what the city is doing versus all other communities. It's hard to figure out. I don't admonish any citizens for having incorrect information, but there is a lot of incorrect information out there, trying to get you the right stuff. With that, we can move on to 5.2, which is street maintenance and CIP update.
Good evening, Mayor. I'm the president of council. I'm Levi Lloyd, Director of City Operations. Last week's study session, Councillor Noseworthy had requested an update on streets, maintenance, and CIP projects, so I'm here to present that. Okay, so in 2020 year to date, we've been doing... Streetscrews have been doing the typical maintenance that they do in winter as conditions allow. We patched 635 potholes to May 1st, and May 1st, we started with spring cleanup, crack sealing. You can see we've done over 27,000 feet of linear feet of crack sealing. And then during spring cleanup, we picked up approximately 4,740 cubic yards, which equates to about 470 Ford dump truck loads of material. We mulched a considerable amount of material. We always recycle. We have community members that go in and take scrap metal and recycle. They go through the piles and pull the scrap metal out of that and recycle that. So a large portion of what goes out every year gets recycled or mulched, and we give that mulch to citizens. Every year, we... This year, due to COVID-19, but we will be kicking that program off probably again next spring. So let's move on to projects. The Thomas Avenue project was bid and awarded. We awarded the project to DNL Construction out of Cortez, Colorado. This is a complete reconstruction of the street with the curb gutter and sidewalk, slum sewer improvements, reconstruction of the subgrade, and a new asphalt paving surface. This is a $999,000 project. They will be starting on Monday, is the scheduled start date, and the completion date is scheduled for November 27, 2020. ADA ramp improvements, this was awarded to S&amp;S Construction. There's 33 total ADA ramps in this project. It's a $118,000 project. 14 of those ramps were completed as of May 28, and they are scheduled to be finished on July 20, or on, sorry, July 17 of this year. Street overlays, Four Corners Materials was the successful low bidder on street overlays. This is 25,000 square yards of overlays in five project areas, you can see them listed there. It's a $487,000 project. This is one project that has been deferred temporarily until we can assess the tax revenue declines from COVID-19. We will reassess in July and tentatively look at starting this project, issuing a notice award. Notice to proceed in August of this year if tax revenues rebound like we think they will. We worked with Four Corners Materials on a number of projects. They have agreed to hold their costs until the end of the summer and expedite these projects as we move forward if we can award them. Surface treatments, HA5 is a seal coat. This was awarded to Andel Construction, 31,000 square yards on nine streets, mostly in the Twin Heights area, $105,000 project. They are also scheduled to start on June 8, which is Monday, and they will be finished July 17. This company has done a fantastic job. When they do this, they have to close down the street completely, so they are setting up shuttles for the citizens on those streets. They'll have masks, hand sanitizer, and they'll be limiting the number of people in the vans so that they can get people in and out of their homes and still accomplish their work. Open grade friction course, AGFC, is another surface treatment. Again, Four Corners Materials was the successful low bidder on this. It's 43,000 square yards on Farida Road, and it's essentially from the roundabout at Riverview up to the light at 250. It's a $462,000 project, and again, this is a project that has been deferred based on the tax revenue decline of COVID-19. We'll be looking at that again in July, potentially awarding that in August or September of this year. Street reconstructions, again, it sounds like a broken record, but Four Corners Materials was the successful low bidder on this. It's 25,000 square yards in eight project areas. You can see the streets listed there, little over, just under, I'm sorry, it's $1.1 million project cost. Again, deferred. We'll be assessing this and awarding this hopefully in August if sales tax revenues continue to increase. Alley paving, our initial bids came in significantly over budget. We had $100,000 in the budget, the bids came in at $191,000. We have reduced the scope of the project in the rebid of that project scheduled to open on June 23. This is a project that we had... This is a project that we had initially identified as a reduction based on the economic conditions, but we will assess this with the other projects as we move forward. Any questions on any of that?
Thank you, thank you, Levi. Can you give us again the dollar total for the, the three projects that are confirmed and underway? The Thompson, the ADA ramps, and I think the third one was the surface treatments? And I have a question, follow up to that.
Yeah, so Thomas Avenue is just under a million. It's nine hundred and ninety-nine thousand. The ADA projects is a hundred and eighteen thousand dollars. The HA5 seal coat treatment is a hundred and five thousand dollars. And those are the projects that we have awarded to date. And then the other projects not to, just under two million, just under two million dollars, I believe, that will be reassessing in August.
So, so my question is, I, I believe, you know, we collected tax starting in July of 2019 through that year, and I think that was something like two million just to start with in the bank. So I guess I'm wondering if we had two million to start with and we're still coming in. We seem to not be spending as much as we had available to, to actually address some of these urgent problems.
So we, the, that two million is going toward the Thomas project, the ADA ramps and the HA5. And then we will, the next projects up as, as we see where the, that tax revenue is here in the next couple of weeks. Next up, we would look at reconstructions because those take a little bit more time. So those would be the next streets that we would award. So if the tax revenue shows positive trends and we have the, the money in the bank now, we would award those. We don't have to wait until August. So we're, we're assessing on a continual basis to see when we can start awarding some of these projects.
And I would suggest to, to you and Amber that as I asked earlier, when can we start releasing some of those that have been pulled back? Eight hundred thousand dollars sitting in the bank with streets not being fixed and putting people to work in the community could be a very important investment and obligation that we have committed to the people of the community. So thank you. I appreciate the prudence, but I also just want to make certain we're using that money to get those roads fixed sooner. So thank you.
Any other comments for Levi? Yeah.
I wanted to ask you, Levi, I was wondering if the spring cleanup was larger this year than in the past or smaller or?
I was, it was actually on par with what we had seen. We, the first couple of weeks, we actually anticipated, we kind of projected that it was going to be larger than it had been the previous year. But the last week or so, there wasn't quite as much material out as we had anticipated. And I think some of that is due to the urban scavenging that happens. People taking metal and things of that nature out. We see big piles and then when we show up, people have gone in and taken a lot of the stuff that's in them. So, but last year, just as an example, last year we did roughly five thousand one hundred cubic yards. So we were just, you know, a couple hundred cubic yards under what we have done traditionally. And, and spring cleanup is usually in the high four thousand, low five thousand cubic yard.
Thank you. And Levi, I have one more question. Were you also, is part of your report going to give us an update on the administration building and the back to garage?
Up next.
It's next.
Yeah, Jared is going to give that next.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. And with that, we have item five point three on the agenda, which is an update regarding the utilities administration building, which is for our citizens out there, the last component of the wastewater treatment facility. You'll see it under construction near where the old Chamber of Commerce used to be. So Jared?
Good evening, Mayor Brookie and councilors. I am here, a poor stand-in for Greg Boyson, but we'll be giving you the update on what's happening down with the admin building. So I went ahead and PDFed this thing. There we are. All right. So can everybody see that screen all right? Again, my, my appreciation goes out to Greg Boyson. He's doing great work on this site, among many other things, and continues to be kind of linchpin of keeping these projects running and being a great project manager. So I just want to give that shout out, but so just if you have not been down on the site recently, you can see some of the pictures we have here. The main entrance from Santa Rita Park is really starting to come together. You can kind of see that in the center picture here. That's going to be kind of the walk-in right from Santa Rita Park. And then you see the portico and the public restrooms. And that's over on the trail side. That is, is currently they're kind of getting that degrade. They're doing the rock facade and, and moving that forward. So some additional pictures, you can see that, that you can tell Greg helped me with this presentation because I wouldn't use a word like wainscot. But you can see the brick wainscot they're putting in along the wall. And we've also been engaging with the, you know, Durango Botanical Society to talk about how the landscaping plan is going to move forward as well. So we're kind of trying to plan both for the future of this and getting this project done as we move through the fall. You see this, if you keep going down the river trail, you, you get to see the brick facade. It's the same brick facade from the same quarry that was used for all the stone facades in the whole, in the whole project. So it's all designed to be the same. And of course, it was originally bid together. But again, it's, it's going really well. We've been very happy with Jane's efforts and the work and, and they've been continuing that work without much hangup. Here you can start, you can see a couple of pictures from that second floor. So you can start to see where the office spaces will be, looking out. And actually, the, the second, the center photo here to the very corner of that, that's where there will be a, a second floor patio that overlooks the, the Anamis River there. And, and we, they are actually starting to put in, hang some sheet rock now. So they're starting to get enclosure. There's a little bit of steel placement that continues. But they, they may be enclosed in the next few weeks, which is, you know, again, great, great work, Jane's. It's a testament to the effort they've put into it. And this picture is of the Vector Garage. Again, this is kind of back in the middle of the site, immediately adjacent to the Headworks Building. And so they are, you know, they directed the cast and place forms for concrete and they'll be placing those walls in the next week or so. And you'll see that building really start to move ahead behind those cast and, cast and place forms. They've already done some concrete blockwork. And so it, it continues to proceed. Again, both of these, we had originally had the the admin building moving ahead. We put the Back to Garage into the project after the city council adopted the budget in December. Thank you for that. And so they, they both are moving ahead and they both still maintain that deadline of the third of December for completion. And I, I had provided some of this information to Devon, I think, two weeks ago, or, or maybe she had presented it last week. But kind of the, the budget summary. So overall, we have, you know, nine point six million dollars in, in contracted costs. Other things like geotech, plan review, furnishings and additional excavation for the sum total of nine point nine million dollars. To date, four point six million has been spent. So we are at about forty-seven percent of the project spent. And we are at a little over fifty, almost sixty percent of our timeline is gone. So we have a hundred and eighty-four days left. In my discussions with Greg and in our, in the weekly meetings that are conducted with Jane's, they, they are moving at a really great speed. And so they expect to be done potentially in October, but I'm not going to hold my breath for that. I'm, I'm just going to keep looking at the twelve, three days. So.
Jared, can I ask you a question if I may? I thought the administration building was going to cost eight million dollars. And the back to garage was going to cost one million dollars. So it seems like it's ten percent above what I believe were the CIP approved projects. Can you help me out with that?
So the, the CIP approved projects were, and, and again, I'm, I'm giving you everything here. If we just talk about construction, that would just be the Jane's cost of eight point three. But we had already appropriated three hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the design costs prior to the twenty, twenty nineteen budget. So again, I'm giving you total project cost that includes the appropriation made in September for design. And that was September of two thousand and eighteen. The twenty nineteen budget number, the twenty twenty budget number as well. So all, you know, I'm giving you all of those numbers together instead of one of those or, or any, any particular one of those costs. And you see that Jane's actual construction cost is eight point three million. And you see that change order number two there. The Vector Garage, that, that is that part of the project, that's nine hundred and twenty-nine thousand dollars. So.
Barbara, I think I might have a response to your question. The previous city manager did make an administrative change approval to take, I believe it was seven hundred thousand dollars from previously appropriated projects to put towards the admin building. Jared, is the, am I missing something or can you expand at all on that? Because I think that may be part of the question, the response to the question that Barbara's asking.
And before you do respond, Jared, I'd like to know, at a seven hundred thousand dollar reappropriation from something the city council had appropriated, when did that come back to city council for discussion?
So, so just to answer that question, yes, there was, I, I believe in September of twenty nineteen, Ron had, had, I believe, come to council or mentioned it to council that he, he was going to move some money or do some project sweeps, we, we swept. I've got project numbers here. You know, it was the last dollars from projects ten forty-four, ten seventy-eight, eleven hundred, ten sixty-seven and twenty thirty-one to make that difference. And, and the total was seven hundred and seventy-seven thousand dollars.
So thank you, Jared. I, I'm just, for your counsel saying that I believe we're supposed to talk about the CIP project and the process next week at our meeting. And I think this is maybe a good example because I'd certainly like to know that it was a robust discussion and city council actually approved a reallocation of this sum. So, you know, I, I understand it's already good, the horse has left the barn, but I am concerned about an appropriation of that size being fully discussed and, and determined. Thank you, but thank you for follow up. And Amber, I'll look forward to it when we have that discussion on the CIP best practices and recommended policies.
My, my recollection was there was a transfer from projects that were either not completed or under budget that had previously been allocated by council. And so these were not, you know, it wasn't, I wouldn't use the term swept. They were just applied to this project to facilitate its completion. So but yeah, I'd be anxious to see any tracking of that information so that the public doesn't think that this didn't get discussed.
And I think the Councilor Nozworthy's comment is that I believe that we've been discussing that best practices would have allowed for that switch to come to city council's approval since it had been already approved for a different kind of project. So I agree that this is one of our policy conversations we need to take.
I, I think we might find it in the minutes, actually. So is what I'm saying. So.
Well, and perhaps we could just get an update next week when we talk about it and clarify, answer questions and put it on the table for future policy discussions. Because we've all suggested we want to do that. So we may need to readdress some of that.
Exactly. With that, I'd like to, I understand Chief Brammer has a, a few words for us this evening. Short presentation by chief.
Yes. Good evening, Mayor and councilors. I'd like to take this opportunity to speak on behalf of our officers and staff. Today we took a picture in front of the police department, which I would like to share as I speak. Our nation is tearing itself apart. I witnessed an amazing sight earlier this week. Many members of our community united. United in a peaceful assembly to express their pain and frustration. The pain and frustration we at the Durango Police Department also share. I cannot rightfully claim to know the level of pain in each of our communities. I can only empathize. Institutional racism and discrimination continue to permeate our society. And Durango is not immune. The only way to address injustice is to understand the issue and take action. On both Friday and again on Saturday, we heard our community. Commend everyone who participated in these emotional events. By expressing your First Amendment rights in a peaceful manner was a powerful statement. We at the Durango Police Department want to continue to support all members of our community. We want to cooperate with every member of our diverse community. Provide all a safe space and platform to be heard. To express your voice, we are not your enemy. Our power is derived from the people. We police our community to the power provided by the people. We need, we must partner with key members of our community. Better understand your needs. Adopt strategies, promote social harmony, increase awareness and accept diversity. We have started discussions with both Ford Lewis College and the city's Community Relations Commission. Host listening sessions in the near future. As your chief of police, I made a commitment to be a leader. I took an oath to uphold the law with equality to all. Let us work together. And thank you, Mayor, City Council. Thank you for allowing me to share this time.
Thank you, Chief. Thank you. And I, I hope, hope we can get that picture on the front page of the Herald. That's very powerful and thank you for having extreme restraint and, and the great training and, and everything from de-escalation training to transgender one-on-one, as I understand there is a course for it. So that our police department has taken to ensure inclusivity and and fair law enforcement in our community. Thank you for that statement. Appreciate it. And I hope we can do our part as citizens. Thanks.
Can I just say thank you too? I just want to send my sincerest thanks to Chief Brammer for taking the time to talk with our community and to address our community during this extremely important time. And to, for all of our Durango police officers and staff for working so hard to, to, to to be a community, a safe community with fair and equal treatment. And, and I appreciate it. I appreciate your efforts. And I appreciate you taking a stance and speaking with us today. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
And I'd just like to add in, I observed both the, two weeks ago Friday, the anti or opposed to the mask march, and then also on Saturday, the demonstration for racial justice and justice. And both of them were civil, respectful, and I noticed the police participation at both of them. And I, I thank you for that. And I thank the community for exercising your rights to be critical and to have differences and to do it in very respectful, civil man. Thank you. And I'll also add, there'll be another vigil Friday night, this coming Friday night at Buckley Park at seven PM.
And I, I'd like to say that I believe that your police force under your guidance, this is their standard behavior, good behavior and treating people with respect. And that you're not changing just because of the situation, that this is how you are and this is how you behave with our community. And I really appreciate that.
Thank you, chief, and thank you councillors for weighing in. If Chris were here, he'd make it unanimous, I know. So, so thank you for that. Well, with that, we're on to the consent agenda. Item seven on our published agenda. And the consent agenda is intended to allow the city council by a single motion to approve matters that are considered routine or non-controversial. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member requests that an item be removed from the consent agenda and considered separately. Items removed from the consent agenda will be considered under agenda item eight. So let's have a reading, first we'll have a reading of the consent agenda. And then I'll ask for items to be removed.
Ben, we can't hear you.
Can you guys hear me?
Awesome.
Item 6.1 is approval of minutes from the study session from May 12th, 2020. Item 6.2 and 6.3 are discussion of possible action. And item 6.2 concerns a resolution regarding the reduction in council compensation in accordance with citywide employee furloughs. That's resolution 2020-14. Item 6.3 concerns the submission of an administrative planning grant application to support an electric vehicle readiness plan. Item 6.4 and 6.5 are request for a public hearing. 6.4 is to consider an ordinance authorizing the conveyance of one-half interest in city-owned property known as tract A3 of Macaw subdivision number one, project number 91-142 at 820 Airport Road to La Plata County with the date of June 16th, 2020. And that ordinance would be 2020-04. And then lastly, item 6.5 is a request for a public hearing to consider an ordinance amending Tabor emergency reserves with the date of June 16th, 2020. And that's ordinance 2020-05.
Thank you, Ben. Do we have any items that would, councillors would like to remove this evening?
Yes, Dean, Mayor Bricky. I'm not used to saying that. It doesn't flow yet.
I'm still doing.
I'd like to move 6.5, please.
Thank you.
And I'd like to, I have a few questions on item 6.3.
Excellent. So I'm understanding that we have, we'd like to retract 6.3 and 6.5. And in which case I'd ask for a motion to approve 6.1, 6.2, and 6.4 of the consent agenda this evening.
So moved.
All seconded.
It's been moved and seconded. Maybe we have a roll call, please.
Councillor Youssef?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Baxter?
Yes.
And then councillor Nosworthy?
Yes.
And Mayor Bricky?
Yes. Thank you so much. Now, if we can have a little discussion on 6.3, the electric vehicle readiness plan.
Good evening, councilors. Kevin Hall, Assistant City Manager. I'm here to answer any questions you might have regarding that item.
Councillor Nosworthy?
Yes, thank you, Kevin. I, I have, I think, two questions. It says that the energy audit, you know, you'll be hiring a consultant to develop a strategic plan and we lay that out for the electrical vehicle. And I know that in the past, I think it was ForeCor did some work on the, the conversion of our fleet. And so first was, will you be, I have three questions. And first, will you be building on that work as part of the, any consulting work that we're doing so that we're not starting from scratch? And in the effort to shop local, will there be an emphasis on working with a local nonprofit that might have expertise or consult into independent contractors as well? But a nonprofit or independent that would have expertise in that? And then my last question related to it is the timing. You talk about starting it in the summer and having it available in, by the end of 2020. But my concern would be to have that information available in such a timely manner that we can incorporate it into the planning for the 2021 budget. So those are my three questions and topics to raise.
Sure. There is a little confusion on this agenda doc where it does reference the energy performance contract. That isn't what this is. That's just a typo. This is really a standard planning, planning process that, you can see we have a number of leveraged opportunities for funding here. In terms of ForeCor and the work they have done, we most certainly will include that. One of the earliest components of this project would be kind of community context and stakeholders. So as with any good planning project, you kind of put your feelers out and ask, what has already been done? What's relevant to what we're doing? And how can we harness the work that's been done already? ForeCor, as my understanding, never completed the full kind of fleet analysis, vehicle analysis that they are doing in the community for a variety of reasons I'm not entirely clear on, but the work didn't get done. However, we will work with ForeCor as well as the other stakeholders. We have a very close partnership with LPEA, as you can see in the agenda doc. They'll be a partner in this as well. As for who will do the work, once we have secured the funding, we're able to put out, issue an RFP and see who's interested in or capable of doing that work. There'll be some minimum qualifications required of whomever. We do not limit it to local companies. Our purchasing process does have some preference for local and state contractors, but it doesn't allow us to necessarily keep it local unless there's a compelling reason in it. And quite frankly, is the best of the proposals that come in. So time will tell on that one. And then as for a schedule, you know, it's unfortunate it's playing out the way it is. As you know, we kind of went into a bit of a slowdown here a few months ago with, for a variety of reasons, COVID being certainly the primary one. You know, we will try to move this along as expeditiously as possible. But I think we will be learning a lot along the way that may inform some actions that can occur before the plan is officially stamped, approved. You know, we have been doing fleet analysis and looking at opportunities for electric vehicles for some time. So it's not like we're starting from scratch here. But what we are trying to do is put together more of a comprehensive, community-wide view of things. So, you know, if we can come up with some good direction early on, that would be fabulous. But until we move into the process, I just don't know where we will be at that point.
Kevin, as I, as I read it, I mean, what, what the topic of this agenda item is, is just simply a letter from the mayor to DOLA, Patrick Rondinelli of Department of Local Affairs to obtain a $25,000 grant to accomplish this. So yeah, I, I, I agree. I think, you know, I'm anxious to see how this rolls out. But who, the who and how of this is not of urgency at this moment until we get the money, I guess. And so what the action taken on this would simply allow me to sign this letter of request from DOLA for a $25,000 grant to address this topic.
So if there is support for doing so, we'll put it on the, the proper letterhead, get it dated correctly and, and find its way to the mayor for signature if there's support.
And can you remind us of when the decision will be made on the proposal that would be submitted?
Well, on the, on the grant application or?
Yes, and on the $25,000 request.
Well, what's interesting with, we have a great relationship with Department of Local Affairs. Administrative planning grants, if there's funding available and it meets the criteria, they move very quickly. So quite frankly, once we submit this, we, we've already talked to Patrick Rondinelli. And I'm not going to say that we have the funding awarded to us yet because we don't. We had to do the formal submittal, but he was very supportive of the project. And this project is one of those classic ones where you have such great leverage and partnerships. The city's total participation in this looks to be, you know, less than 10 to 15% right in there of the total project cost. So it's one that Patrick very, was very supportive of.
And I thank you for the work. I supported it when we get ready to come up for whatever vote, but I totally support it. My main goal is if we can get a thorough report, but also incorporate it into our planning for next year's budget. I, I think that's extremely important to start addressing the fleet conversion.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? Questions? If not, I'd entertain a motion.
I'll, I'll recommend approve and authorize the submission of an application to the Colorado Department of Local Affairs Administrative Planning Grant Program to support an electric vehicle readiness plan.
All seconded.
Been moved and seconded. May I have a roll call, please?
Councillor Youssef?
Yes.
Councillor Nosworthy?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Baxter?
Yes.
And Mayor Bricky?
Yes. Thank you, thank you, and good discussion. Our next item was 6.5, a request for a public hearing to consider an ordinance amending Tabor emergency reserves. So I'm, I'm sure we all know that this is just a request to put this on the, the city council agenda for two weeks from now. So I'd like to reserve any item, any discussion that would be considered a public hearing for that date. But be happy to have staff answer any other questions regarding the, the need for this topic on our agenda.
So I was hoping that Dirk could give a, just a very, very brief overview of it because it's something unusual. It's not been done by us before. And then I just had one or two points after that that I'd like to make.
I think if, if we need to update on the process, we should have Dirk Nelson ask, talk about the, the need for this to be posted two weeks prior to an actual public hearing. And then we are, it would become a topic of our, of our council hearing, it would become a hearing item in two weeks. But.
I understand what you're saying, Dean, but it is on our agenda and there's documentation for it. And I just thought a very brief discussion of it by the city attorney might be helpful for the public so that they're informed about where we're going and what we might be doing.
It's just a very unique situation under this emergency ordinance that we're under.
Sure, sure. Dirk, are you available to comment on that?
I, I am. I hope you can hear me.
I can hear you fine.
So yes, this, this process came out of a sort of front-to-back analysis of all of the funds that might be reviewed when we were looking for a response to the COVID crisis. And I had a discussion with Dee Weiser, who is the city's special bond counsel some time ago. And I think councillor Baxter actually also raised this idea. It's at a study session, as I recall, about undertaking a review about the city's Tabor reserves. As you know, Tabor, one of its provisions requires all local governments to budget 3% of its sort of general fund revenues for a emergency reserve. Unfortunately, the language of Tabor very much restricts the ability of cities or any local government for that matter to use those Tabor emergency reserves to pay for anything other than the direct expenses associated with the emergency. So that means that the city really cannot, in Dee's opinion, use Tabor reserve funds to make up revenue shortfalls, which is, has been in the last couple of significant emergencies the city has faced, that being 416 fire and this emergency. That, those kinds of losses actually are the bulk of the impacts on the city. So one of the ideas is to take a city asset and it's focusing primarily, or this proposal is focusing primarily on using a real estate asset to pledge for the emergency reserve. It would have to be valued at an amount equal to the reserve requirement. The reserve requirement is approximately $1.3 million, I believe, in the 2020 budget. So it will be necessary to try to find an asset that's appropriate, that's valued appropriately, that's reasonably liquid. It doesn't have to be just one asset. It could be a variety of smaller assets might be appropriate. It could also be used in combination with some cash to make up the Tabor reserve. But the effect of that would be to allow council to reappropriate the roughly 1.3, assuming we replace all of it with an asset or any other purpose, including the creation of an emergency reserve that could be used for broader purposes than those allowed under Tabor. So again, this is, this is set for requesting a hearing to discuss all these items in depth. It would require an addition to the code, city code. So therefore we need, we need the hearing and moving in authorization to move forward to create an ordinance to make that be effective. This process and this technique is used by the state of Colorado and has been for many, many years. City in Kenny in Denver, I know, does it. I think they use a combination of assets, real estate assets and cash. I think likewise, the state does the same thing. School districts are authorized also to do this. And many, many of the school districts have done it because they are, school districts, of course, are very real estate intensive organizations. And it frees up cash for them to use. So that's the idea. And I'd be happy to answer any questions if you have other questions.
That sounded great, Dirk. Thank you very much. The two points that I wanted to make were that the major benefit of this is is it allows more flexibility under times of emergency and stress like we're under now. And the other thing I wanted to say is it doesn't require us to do this. It just gives capability should we decide to. And so that's really the benefit of, of the situation.
Sure. And, and again, one of the discussion items will be in two weeks, you know, how that decision is made. And you're right, and I think that decision about how to, what assets to use and the emergency reserve could be made on an annual basis as part of the budget. I, I was thinking this year, because it would be a little out of the budget cycle, is that we would perhaps authorize as part of this year that we would go ahead and potentially pledge an asset for that purpose in 2020. And then as part of the 21 budget, reassess that in terms of whether you wanted, you know, what sort of asset you want to designate at that point. That, that was just my thinking. And I think that's reflected in the agenda doc.
Yeah. And I would also say that to that point, that in reality, we need to have a better assessment of financially where we are and where we think we're going before we make those decisions. And for me, anyway, it seems like it's more event motivated versus budget cycle motivated. So if, because you can't forecast, for example, we didn't, that we'd have the coronavirus. So we, we wouldn't have in 2019 been able to really make an assumption based on this. Whereas now, and as we go into the future with better numbers, then we can.
Right. Good point. Yes, thank you.
I, I have a question for you as well, Dirk. And if you can't answer it now, I, I wanted to throw it out there so we could, could answer it in two weeks. And that is, you know, we've been grappling with, when do we pull back the state of emergency that we're under right now and actually start working to our next phase? And so I, but I do see to councillor Baxter's point that the merit of having this available as an option. So my question would be, if I understand that we have to be in a state of emergency when you initiate the action, but that doesn't necessarily mean that you have to be in a, a state of emergency for the whole period of time that you may be using these resources. So I'd like the, a little more specific information around the start time for this and how that would impact our ability to go away from a state, a declared state of emergency.
Okay, well, the, you know, I, I think the, the use of the emergency funds under Tabor are tied to, actually, there's, there's about one short sentence in Tabor that addresses this. But it does require that it be used for a declared emergency. So if you're going to use the Tabor funds, again, there would have to be a declared emergency and then it could be used in response to the. it could be used in response to that emergency. So I don't know that it necessarily has to be a declared emergency for the entire time the funds are going to be used. But in this case, in our case, current case, we really aren't looking to use those funds, again, because I think they're limited under paper on how they can be used. So just to be clear, the idea would be that an asset would be pledged to the emergency reserve, keeping in mind that the use of those emergency reserves is very limited. And Tabor was adopted in 93, I believe. So there's never been any use of emergency funds in the city of Durango. And I'm not aware, I asked Dee's point blank if he was aware, even cities on the front range, for instance, when there were the massive floods a few years back, if any of them used those emergency reserves for that. And he was not aware of anyone who had done that simply because the limitations are so strict that people haven't done it. So I'm not sure I'm answering your question, but I think to do the process that we're talking about would not require a declared emergency. This would just be an effort to change the kind of assets that we allocate for the emergency reserves. And then the second question, which I think is, is what you're asking, if I'm not misunderstanding, is that how then would you access those emergency Tabor reserves if we needed them? And that would require an emergency declaration. Those funds would have to be repaid, replenished if they're used, basically by the end of the next budget cycle. That's what also our city code says. So we can certainly discuss all of that in two weeks, those kind of details. So I hope I answered your question.
You have to, a little bit, but I'd still like clarification for when we might, and this is a discussion for next week or in the following weeks, when we might go out of a state of emergency and into our next phase of what we're going to do with the recovery of this in this situation. So if I understand you correctly, we've already had the emergency. So we might have an option to, to leverage these, these funds. But it doesn't preclude us from actually possibly going out of a declared state of emergency.
I think that's absolutely right. I think the, the action that's contemplated in the agenda documentation in terms of substituting a real estate asset for cash would really have nothing to do, wouldn't be limited in any way by the current declaration. This could be done at any time. And I think to Councilor Baxter's point, and I think that would maybe part of her point was that that could be done really at any time if you wanted to do that. And then in the effect of it would be, would free up those funds, and the council then would be free to designate the use of those funds, all or part of which you might want to keep for, again, a more flexible emergency reserve.
It makes sense. And if you could, Dirk, Mr. Nelson, sorry, when in, for our agenda doc next week, or when we have this on for our next city council study session for the public hearing time, or whenever it is the council will have been reviewing it, if we could get, you know, more information on, since it doesn't sound like a very, it sounds like a relative, it sounds like it's done by the school boards and it's been done up in Denver. But if you could make, if we could make sure we look at other communities, why they may or may have not considered or done this type of substitution, what impacts, if it impacts bonding capacity and what, and what matters. We just need to understand all the details behind it before we can intelligently talk about it, I think.
Sure. Yeah. And I did ask Dee Weiser those questions, and he actually was very supportive of the idea in terms of, he thought it made a lot of sense in our case to do that. So I will also, I will be prepared to discuss that further and hopefully be able to answer any questions that come up in two weeks.
Thank you.
I may at least, and I may in this case try to rough out an ordinance that would be available. They're not always available at the hearing, but I think in this case that would very well may, my intention is to have an ordinance roughed out and have Dee review it perhaps even in advance of that hearing. So and just, and I'll speak of timing a little bit here. If we just use the normal course of events, we should be able to have something like this, assuming council wants to adopt it, be in effect probably by the end of July, which I think coincides with, you know, some, by then, we may have a little better feel for where we stand with the budget shortfalls and so forth.
Exactly. Thank you, Dirk. Appreciate that. And with that, any other questions or should I ask for a motion?
Ask for a motion. I'll make one.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilor Baxter.
I'd like to make a motion to set a public hearing for June 16th, 2020, to take public comment on an ordinance to amend the code of ordinances of the city of Durango, Colorado, to provide for the option of using real property owned by the city to serve us all or part of the emergency reserve required by Tabor.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. May we have a roll call, please?
Counselor Nozworthy?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Baxter?
Yes.
Counselor Youssef?
Yes.
And Mayor Bricky?
Yes. And I'm looking forward to anything that we can divert money away from Tabor funds and pledge other assets is, is, sounds like a good idea to me. And we look forward to a discussion in a couple of weeks. With that, we move on to the public hearing segments, item nine. We have no public hearings this evening, not legislative or quasi judicial. So, and we have no other thoughts from the city attorney. I'll let, ask Dirk if, one more time, if he has any other items he wants to bring before us, but there are no, nothing on the agenda. Okay. Thank you. And we have no introduction of ordinances this evening. So that takes us to item 12, our, our agenda, which is administrative with the city update by interim city manager, Amber Blake.
Good evening, Mayor Bricky and members of the city council. This evening, I have a few items on the city update for you. I'd like to begin with an update on the mask order. And we received questions about how the public health order is going and what the related calls are. So first, related to the mask order, Mr. Hall Kevin had a conversation last week with Mr. Watson, who's the owner of Nature's Oasis. And he informed him that we would have this relay his displeasure with the lack of emphasis on enforcement. And that would mean strict enforcement rather than the voluntary compliance and education that the city is currently seeking. He feels that the enforcement has been left to the business operators with no support from the city. And while he is seeing significant compliance at his store, which again is Nature's Oasis, those few who choose not to wear face covering are often confrontational and threaten legal action. So he further indicated that the order should be enforced by the city, rescinded or shortened. So this is just feedback to the council that the city manager's office received. And then this evening, I have the last two weeks, so from 5:19 to 6:02, the update on the public health order. We had 211 public health order related calls. And of those calls, 17 were reported through online reporting, and 188 of them were officer initiated checks of businesses or contacts with individuals throughout the city. Six of them were dispatched through our dispatch center. And 18 of those contacts ended with DPD giving a verbal warning for the public health order violation. There was one written warning. Nine of the complaints turned out to be unfounded and 173 were cleared as citizen assists. So this is where we are with the enforcement of the public health orders. The next item that I wanted to discuss with council or report on was the draft guidance from the governor. I'd like to make sure that the community knows that they can go to the state of Colorado's webpage at covid19.colorado.gov. And that's where you, as a citizen, can input your feedback related to this upcoming guidance. Again, that's only open until noon tomorrow. So there's places of worship draft, draft guidance, personal recreation draft guidance. This is for pools, parks, gyms, rec centers, and organized sports. And then outdoor industry draft guidance. So those are the three areas. And again, that's due tomorrow by noon. And there may be amendments based on stakeholder feedback. And then the next item that I have is the city of Durango. I mentioned this earlier, but for those individuals that are watching and may have missed, playgrounds will be opening based on the guidance from the governor that we're hoping to see this week, the final guidance. And we will then be rolling out game time for childcare this summer, as well as our other summer programs, and then the recreation center, all based on that guidance from the governor. This next item that I have to report on was a key discussion item that the council had last week at the study session, related to changes for Main Avenue, related to opening some of the public right of way for retail and business and restaurant use. City staff has been working very closely with BID and all of this, and stakeholders over the past week to secure more space for businesses within the city right of way. And I wanted to make sure that it's very clear that all of our stakeholders and BID and city staff are in agreement that any plan that's put forward has to be safed, has to be safe, functional, supported by the majority of business owners, embraced by the BID. And when I say safe, we're looking at ADA compliance. We're making sure that it's safe for both active shopping, eating, dining, whatever it is in that public space, as well as for vehicles. So pedestrians, cyclists, drivers, and that's going to be a change. So the plan of attack right now is that we have the road diet, which would take four travel lanes down to two, one in each direction, plus a center turn lane. And this would run from approximately College Drive to 13th Street. We are working with CDOT and will coordinate on adjustments for the signals. And then the bump outs, which are platforms that would then be at the same level as the sidewalk. We're looking at using approximately 60 parking spaces and several additional feet of vacated travel lane to create approximately 12 areas for additional commerce. And this would require road being repainted and signal modifications. And staff is comfortable with this. The parking, parking vacancy rate downtown is high and currently there's ample parking in the vicinity. We also have the parking lots on East Second Avenue, as well as the transit center lot. And we're working with the 9R school district to see if we can use parking in their parking area up at the administration building at the end of East Second. And then after 5:00 PM, we've had conversations with the county and the parking lots, where both near the Schluter Building, as well as the additional lot are available for public parking after 5:00 PM. So that can also help assist with that loss of parking downtown or shift of that space. The BID and business support, there was a survey that was sent out to 341 contacts by the BID and for businesses in the central business district. And this includes East Second Avenue, as well as Cross Streets, Town Plaza, businesses along Camino Del Rio, as long as, and along Main Avenue. And 106 responses were received. That's a 31% response rate. And of that 31% response rate or those 106 responses, 77% or 82 votes were in favor and 23% or 24 votes were not in favor. And Tim Walsworth sent us over that information this afternoon. We're working on an additional emergency order to use the right of way. So that's one of the items that we're working on this week. And we're also looking at the budget and cost share between the city BID and CDOT, and that's still being worked out. In addition to this, there's permitting that will be required. And we're streamlining the bistro permit program to permit businesses to use space and we're waiving that fee. And until the area is ready for use, bistros will be allowed to expand on the sidewalk as long as they meet that ADA compliance for the pedestrian clear zone, and that's maintained. The next hurdle that we have to overcome is the state liquor licensing, which is a separate process. So we're working through that as well. And we're looking to roll this out in June. And I think the key thing is I'm going to go back to safety and making sure that we do this right. There's, it's a lot of change at once. And so it will be implementation at some point this month, but not this week. And then the next phase of this would be to expand into other areas. So that's my update on those pieces. I'd like to let you know that we're continuing the utility bill late fee waiver and avoiding the shut offs. And we're still allowing payment plans. So any of our community members out there needing to set up a payment plan for your city utility bill, please contact the city at 375-5000. And then we'll be still continuing our virtual meetings at this point through July 15. And finally, my last note is that the city's been in conversation with the 9R school district. As we continue to open the community, childcare is definitely an issue that is, that many families are facing. So the 9R school district will be continuing their kids camp program. And families can sign up for childcare on the kids camp program. It's the 9R website and under childcare. And you can sign up under that. There are a number of spaces that are available and they'll be running that through June. And then with the new order from the governor, the city will also be rolling out and starting to ramp up our program for game time. And that's another childcare opportunity. And then Boys and Girls Club is also ramping up their childcare program this summer. Not all of this is directly related to what the city does, but it does impact all of our community members. So I wanted to make sure to take the opportunity to inform our community of the options for childcare that are opening up in our community. And that's what I have this evening.
Thank you, Amber. And thanks for that update on the, being a mother yourself, you're definitely on top of that. And that was the topic of our executive meeting the other day with Dan Snowberger and folks that he was really wanting us to help him promote that program. And it's good to know, previously stated earlier in the meeting, that we quite possibly, the city of Durango, might be opening up the second, the second round of activities for our recreation program this summer. So we can, it's not a for sure, but that's certainly on the horizon. All these would be in compliance for those parents out there that are concerned about enrolling your kids in these programs that would be in compliance with the social distancing and the restrictions that the state has mandated for those programs. So hopefully it'll be a fun and safe experience for, for kids later this summer. Well, that takes us to council reports and actions. And so entertain any council reports and actions for many of my fellow councilors.
I'll jump in. I participated this morning in the Economic Alliance, the La Plata County Economic Development Alliance Board Meeting. And it was really quite well-prepared as usual. They started with a report on the fiscal health and the cash flow of what we can anticipate for the alliance in, and going through the burn rate. So, well, we still need to collect membership fees for that. We're sitting relatively stable with how much we know we're going to be spending and what we have available in the bank. We looked at some of the GDP forecasts at a macro level and the unemployment and how that can be impacting us here in the county. We looked at some of the top concerns with returning to business as usual, and health and safety at work represented close to 50% of people's main concerns. Then the financial management, cash flow was a bit, the second highest concern for them. The new laws and regulations, business models needing to be adjusted, access to healthcare resources, PPL, issues like that, hiring and rehiring, and then resuming supply chain, and then with IT. So those were some of the big issues that we're hearing from the business community about issues for recovery. Then the alliance in particular has been working very hard on the variance application with the county, both for the train and for events and public meetings. They've been working on that. They're starting with visit, along with Visit Durango and the Association of Realtors to target Durango as a place to really promote for that lone eagle, the person who can work from home and/or commute to work in a different location through the, what might have been domestic travel or international travel, and ways to try to attract some members of, some potential members of that economic base into the community. So that's an interesting effort there. They're also looking at the aid They're they're also looking at the A to all, which we had talked about a while ago, and that should be coming to a launch sometime in June. They've been working with the city on some of the task force and the different sectors, particularly manufacturers. The Process Improvement Committee that they've been working with other members of the community with the planning departments for the city and for the county. It's kind of shifting. I think we'll get an update from that maybe from Kevin and others later, but the focus tends to be more on really addressing issues around La Posta and the U R A. And then the sewer study is complete and I haven't seen it yet, but they'll be presenting that in June. And then we just also looked at kind of some of the things that we need to be addressing continued outreach to our members of the alliance. And then we'll be having our membership meeting next week, Tuesday in the morning via Zoom. So that's this morning's meeting.
Thank you, Barbara. Anybody else?
Sure. Happy to. I have a couple of things I wanted to ask council about and talk about in my update. The first I wanted to bring up, which I emailed council about was how we want to respond to the Parks and Rec letter that we received from our Parks and Recreation Advisory Board. Mayor Brookie, you may have more detail on this, so please feel free to chime in. I did talk to Counselor Bettine. He is the liaison to the Parks and Rec Advisory Board. And I asked him if he could provide me a bit of a perspective on that letter and 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 any support information that he might have. He did suggest that, you know, the count that advisory board is anxious to move forward in the discussion of these projects that we deferred, the Parks and Recreation projects that were deferred. And so I wanted to bring that up to council and and talk about, first of all, how we how we might want to respond to that and or when. Maybe we designate another time to talk about it, but I just thought since we did receive that letter from our advisory board, I wanted to figure out kind of how we were going to respond and and in what manner. One of the things that I I think is key in this situation with the bridge in particular over Thirty Second Street is the G O Co grant and the advisory board's concern of the the fact that if we don't move on that in some capacity, which could also include the request for an extension, given the deferment of our project, of all projects, really. We could request a an extension of six more months and possibly even a year so that we don't lose that grant in the interim before we've had more time to evaluate. Chris Bettine's, Counselor Bettine's thought was that, you know, we still have these project on deferment for a reason until we know what the outcome is of our situation. That was his perspective that, you know, we really difficult to engage at this time until we have potentially a little bit more information on where we are in the next few months as far as shortages of cash flows and funding needs. So I just wanted to bring that up first and foremost to talk about how we might move forward with that letter.
Thank you. Thank you, Melissa. Yeah, the and I think it's the same letter. The letter that I read the request was from their board chair that was asking the points that I took were primarily they wanted, they were very interested in seeing the alternatives that have been studied for the alternatives to the Thirty Second Street Bridge Crossing. And so, you know, I think that's certainly in my mind reasonable thing to allow them to weigh in on if that information is available and it should be. And I was thinking that this could be a good topic for further discussion at study session next week. We actually get a copy of that letter in front of us and review the various points and see what kind of action we can recommend be taken relative to that letter. And so the other point that you brought up was that they and this is the part that I don't remember that letter, so thank you, is their desire to review all deferred projects perhaps relative to that status and you know, what the what would trigger us to make that not a deferred project. And I think Counselor Nozworthy has referenced several times, she was wanting to see, you know, how how we, when we can release and not be in emergency status. I think it's personally, I I'm a little more cautious. I, you know, we've had really two really great months of sales tax review if we're just looking at the economic standpoint, where we potentially have dodged a bullet totally, but certainly not as it's not the bazooka we thought it was going to be perhaps, but I'm still a little cautious and now might be the time for me to say that a response from the policy group watching the modeling for the COVID COVID virus. Everybody involved in modeling was concerned about them saying that the next two weeks are absolutely critical to evaluate the the impact of the reopening of businesses. And so the model over the next two weeks will be really important to monitor and watch. We get those reports from Centura and now from a source through C D H P and E. So we've got two models to compare looking at it from a slightly different standpoint. Each agree that, you know, we really need to monitor the the impact of reopening. And of course, will then have direct impact on potentially sales and that kind of thing, our community. If we have a significant rebound, then what do we do? Do we you know, what does that trigger? So I I think in preparation for if we watch the monitoring of the models and it's there's certainly no problem in my mind in allowing various boards to look at those decisions that we made relative to deferments and at least understand what we have done, the action that we've taken. I think they all do, but that's certainly I'd like to get their input in terms of which ones might have priority and guidance in that in that reprioritization if we come back. Counselor Nozworthy?
Yeah, several meetings ago, I did suggest and and I was careful not to require, but I adjust that either Kathy Metz or Kathy and Amber might want to reach out to G O Co to discuss the situation where we're at to explore opportunities because the budget I think has been larger than when than when that proposal was submitted. And we have not received any indication from them of that conversation, maybe it just hasn't made it into the schedule. But I do think that funding agencies often have flexibility in discussing and considering particularly situations such as this. So I think without directing staff, I think it's really important. I see Amber on there now. I think it's really important that we have that information from G O Co of what our options are. And I and I I don't have the numbers immediately in my head, but I do know that our overall north extension of the Animus River Trail i- is larger than when that budget was originally submitted to them for that proposal. So there that might influence their leniency in how that fund those funds are applied.
So as you were talking, I just reached back out to Kathy for an update of where we are with that. So hopefully we'll have that information in the near future and we'll send that on to council.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, thank you. And I think for the public, because we I don't have that letter in front of me unless Melissa, unless you have it. They should be able to access it, I believe, through the media at the Parks and Rec Advisory Board. Is that correct? How they could read that letter if they're listening and want to know more details?
I'm not sure I understand your question. Are you?
The letter that was sent to council, I believe it was also part of the materials for the Parks and Rec Advisory Board meeting.
I and you're asking me what what about it? I'm sorry. I don't understand the question.
Oh, I don't. I don't have the letter in front of me, so I can't for the public listening, give them a sense of what is fully in it. An access of how they could reach it.
Yes, I believe that came
It was an email to city.
Email to council, the gist of that email, that's a that's a good point, and Counselor Nozworthy, was that they were seeking, they were requesting from council that they continue to review the deferred projects and they would like that they would like to review those deferred projects. That was their kind of request to council. They have a meeting, I believe, next week. And so time, you know. And so that's why I kind of wanted to bring it up, just to make sure we had the conversation. And what I'm, I'm not, again, I'm not the liaison, but since Chris is not here, I thought that we should address it. And and I I agree that we do need to get an update from G O Co on that grant. It would seem in the situation that we could get an extension on on funding for G O Co for grants that are outstanding in this situation. It 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 would seem a very appropriate reason to extend. So I'm hopeful that that would work out and then allow us some time to reconsider the projects that we have deferred.
An extension or even allowing us to use it for some of the increased costs that have come up as a result of the it changes in time from when we submitted that proposal. I'd just like to see a lot of options for where we what we could be discussing with them.
But I might just add that, you know, in the past, G O Co has been very flexible and with us and I don't think, you know, there my other dealings with the state at this point were were the least of their problems. And so many, many budgets are being deferred. And probably to say that we wouldn't use it till next year or later this year would come would be music to their ears right now at the state. So but if we could get an update Amber from regarding that and also you know, I think it's fair to say that the actual bids that came in for the bridge as originally designed came in under budget. So don't want the public to have the impression walking away from this conversation that there was that we that the budget was exceeded, that we added a new ramp and we added some additional features to that bridge that do in fact increase the budget over what it was a very, very original budget. But in fact, the bids did come in under budget. So that was a bit of good news. Nonetheless, we've got three other alternatives that we're evaluating in the mix right now anyway, and that's what the Parks and Rec Board would like to weigh in on and give us a suggestion of what their preference would be. And so I think that's totally valid on their part, simple as that.
I'll I'll keep moving on. That was, I'm sorry to I just wanted to make sure we had a conversation about that. I I did have a really good meeting with the Strategy and Long Term Finance Committee meeting. It was very, very productive. It was very helpful. A lot of really great information. We focused primarily on the on reserves and minimum reserve balances. Started with the presentation which Devon did and she did Devon Schmidt did in the finance department. She did a very, very good job. And answered a lot of their questions that they had, brought them up to speed. They were able to provide some really good kind of recommendations to us. I did ask that they consider putting something in writing as some advisories do as far as, you know, what they might suggest for minimum reserve balances for the general fund in particular, which is what we focused on yesterday. And instead of getting into too many of the details here, I feel like it would be best if I waited to kind of go through all those notes. I tried to take very copious notes. And kind of when we have the discussion as a council, maybe bring those up. I think that it we might be having this discussion in our retreat on July eighth. That's what I conveyed to them yesterday. And then I could I could take by, you know, ten minutes before, you know, at the beginning of that discussion to kind of let you know how the conversation went instead of taking up the time in the city council meeting tonight, if if council's supportive of that.
I would be very supportive of that. And I am thanks for reminding me about the retreat. I do have everybody's notes and as as usual, they range from being very broad to very specific. And I'm trying to include those all in an agenda that I'm preparing for consideration by all of us next for next Tuesday's study session. So if just know that I have read, evaluated, and collated everybody's thoughts, and I think we can pack most everything into one concise day of a retreat. So let's look forward to that and we'll go through that proposed agenda next week.
Since you're bringing it up, Mayor Brookie, do we have a facilitator, retreat moderator, any update on that?
We have Amber, can I defer to you on that? We have we have of the alternatives in play at this point, we can have all our parts of either one that's been previously proposed. And I think there's a place for both of them quite quite possibly. So Amber, you might see if there's anything I won't say there. I don't mean to put you on the spot.
Of course. So David Marvin is on hold and he's waiting to see if there are specific items that council would like to procure his services for for a short meeting like was discussed at the last council meeting. Counselor Nozworthy had recommended perhaps an hour session to tackle one topic. That was one of the items. It could be an hour or two. So he is, I will just say, waiting in the wings. So he knows that the full day retreat is not taking place the way that we had originally planned. And then Patrick Rondinelli is has his calendar blocked for July eighth. Should that the council's agenda be related to items that he would be an appropriate facilitator for. So we have two facilitators that are ready and we're just waiting to see what the agenda would look like. And then I'm happy to work with Dean and help facilitate and make sure that we can make this happen.
Yeah, and I think the timetable for that is subsequent to our study session Tuesday and that's
We could talk about it next Tuesday when we're all five here. I think that's fair.
Exactly. So and that was certainly my intent and I'll take any advice that you can give me. But I think I think there's a a little bit of everything in our agenda and hopefully we can get through it in one day. So so thanks for that. It would lead me into that. Check that one off on my list. But thank you, Melissa.
And so I guess I would like to bring up with council or and or staff at some point, you know, we did receive the letter from Nina that they received grant funding for from I'm not actually, I don't even remember where it was, ninety thousand dollars in grant funding for to assist with this navigation center. So I I just wanted to know when when we might be bringing that up again and talking about it and further discussions.
Actually, it's a it's a shelter. It's not a shelter. It's a camp. If I understand it correctly, it's not necessarily a navigation center, if I read that.
Yeah, I'm not. Yeah, yeah, I I'm not certain exactly. I wasn't totally certain from the letter. I think we would need more information. But I and and I, without going into too many of the details now and or discussing, I think that I just was curious if we could talk about it tomorrow or next Tuesday as well under new business, but I just
What I would
There it is.
Amanda, I would offer up that we do just something like that and put it on the study session because I I think it would make sense for staff to circle back with the county staff as well, just get an update of where things are standing with them. Because that letter did go to the B O C C, county staff, city staff, the city council. I know we've had some dialogue over the last couple of months with all of you counselors about some opportunities, but certainly the the grant is new information to us. So you know, we can circle back on it here when the time fits for you.
Excellent. Thank you, Kevin. That would be helpful.
And Kevin, would there I know they've submitted an application to the city for use of that Elks property at near the cemetery, near Greenmont. Is that appropriate? Is that ready for prime time? Could we talk about that next Tuesday perhaps? Or at least get an update of where that's in the process?
Certainly discretion of the council, how you want to proceed with that information. It is available and, you know, staff has done some preliminary review on it, but largely have not processed anything relative to what a permitting process would look like, what resources would be necessary. And it really has been a bit of a holding pattern with COVID.
Excellent. Well, if 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 a council obliged me to talk with Kevin a little more and see if it's an appropriate item to put on our agenda for study session next week or if we continue it for allow him time to do the tasks that he outlined we first spoke. So about checking with the county and so forth. But in their their quest is to obviously put some people in shelter by this winter is the timeliness, the urgency of that. There's a really nice article in the Herald about the how things are setting up at Purple Cliffs and quite a bit of public publicity about how how life is happening. Cliffs and quite a bit of publicity about how, how life is happening at Purple Cliffs and some people are enjoying life up there as well. So I think that enters in the picture and certainly amortizes some of the investments the county and the city have made at, at Purple Cliffs. Still doesn't solve the problem, quite honestly, but anyway, yeah, thank you, Melissa. Anything else? Thanks, thanks. Counselor Baxter, did we hear from you?
No, actually, I didn't have a reporter action this evening.
Well, that's okay, that's okay, no problem. Well, I'll, I'll wrap up then and say that, you know, this next two weeks relative to masks in our community, you know, we're getting, council hears you, we hear the community, we hear the people that are appreciative of the mask ordinance, we hear the people that feel it's a definitely a violation of their First Amendment rights and can't get over the fact that the, you know, a, a community like Durango would impose something that onerous upon them. We heard it this evening earlier and certainly, it, we did this action because we are sitting next to San Juan County, New Mexico, which on all modeling is one of the hotspots in the nation. The Nevaux Nation is consistently, although their curve is coming down, they're no longer in an upward curve, they're now in the downward curve, but the newly, they had, and I'll just look at my notes here from, they had, they have about 208 new cases per day still happening in the Nevaux reservation. They're up to 6,577 reported cases. I won't bore you with the deaths, but it's a significant number. And so when I hear things like that it's a fairy tale or it's certainly, it doesn't exist, COVID does not exist in our community, that's a tribute to the sacrifices that our businesses have made, personal, everybody in our community that's really did a great job of social distancing and really took this event seriously. That's why our numbers are so low. It's not because it doesn't exist, it still exists in our community from a medical standpoint. And we got a couple more weeks of this and that is the critical next two weeks. So I, I encourage our businesses to help enforce. We've heard loud and clear that maybe we need to assist with that effort a little more urgently so that it's not left to our business owners to, to self-enforce. It is the law and, and that's, that's where we'll be for another two weeks till the 19th of June. So there's that. On a lighter issue, Amber Blake, Interim Manager Amber Blake and I will be talking at Eggs and Issues, the Chamber of Commerce Eggs and Issues tomorrow at noon, actually 11:45, I guess it starts and goes till 1 o'clock and it will be, it'll be a, a panel of folks, the city, the county, and I'm not sure if it all is all involved in that, but it should be a robust discussion about where we're at. We'll give a brief, about 10 minutes worth of what the city is doing and how we're doing it and what's new in the city tomorrow at lunch. That's a Zoom conference that will be available. I assume that can be accessed through the Chamber of Commerce website and just sign on. It's, there's, it's a free lunch because there's no food, so just, and that's only worth what you pay for. So with that, I might say also, I want to reinforce that there is a free, free testing, COVID testing at a number of sites done by Cedar Diagnostics and Mercy Hospital. So I don't have the exact locations because they just moved recently, so, but that can be obtained by getting on the San Juan Basin Health website or the Mercy website that would have instructions on where you could obtain a free drive-through coronavirus test. And I think that'll become more and more important as time goes on, especially during the next two weeks as well. That's really all I have.
Dean, Dean, I've gotten quite a few emails and, and phone calls about the status of the city manager search. So I wondered if you could give a quick update on the notebooks? I sent my, my rankings in, what the timing is for that and kind of the conversation with Slaven.
Yeah, yeah, thank you, Barbara, and that was highlighted and I, it was on my last page, but I didn't get there, thank you for that. So we, we have, the, the RFP for a new city manager has been out for a number of months. There have been over 50 responses and we just received a packet, actually a week, two weeks ago, we've had in our possession for about a week and a half now, a hard copy of the resumes for the top 10, if you will, that were selected by Slavens. They took those 50, called them down to the top 10 and those were presented to each of us as individual city counselors to respond to, fill out a form to rank them and send them back to Slavens, who is our consultant to shepherd us through this process. It's my belief that we've all now sent them back to Slavens, so they will be, he will be collating those, compiling those during this next week, whether he has those responses to us by Tuesday or whether he has those by the, you know, what calls a special meeting perhaps or, but to allow us to, so that we see what cumulatively we have picked as the top 10. And then, then he will, these are all still confidential at this point, because obviously these candidates have existing jobs in their own communities, most of them, many of them. And so Slavens would like to talk to us in an executive session about that and see if there's any modification of our previous selections and at least have a little discussion about how he compiled them, if there was any abnormalities or uniformities there and then, and then that would allow him then to take a consensus of those, of his top four, how many ever we want, four, five or six individuals to begin background checks. And so at that point, those people would be notified that they are in the short, in the hunt, if you will, and they would be, have to sign a disclosure that would be their first outing, if you will, to their employers and so forth, and also allow for background checks. So that would be happening within the next couple of weeks, I think, if we can orchestrate that, allow him time to make that, that compilation, get back with us, have a short executive session. That could happen either Tuesday or it could happen after our city council meeting two weeks from now, which is what I, I really think that's a logical schedule, two weeks from now, it probably gives him ample time to do that. And so I think that's what we should expect and then we can make a public announcement, certainly no, no names at that point, but certainly update the public on what the process is, but it is still moving ahead. And, and we do have some, some good candidates and that's all, pretty much all I probably ought to say about that.
Can I just add, because I got this question, that not only did we look at their resumes, but that each of the applicants had to respond to extensive number of questions about style experiences and provide greater background information to different experiences. So I think it's important to talk about the thoroughness of that and I think there might have even been 55 applicants in the initial thing. So I just wanted to clarify that for the public.
Yeah. I also wanted to clarify, Dean, that I, at least in my packet, I think I received 21 applications to rank, not 10. So maybe we're narrowing it, yeah? It wasn't a 21? No, it was 10?
Not me, I, I didn't receive 21. I have my.
So do I.
Okay, maybe so, maybe I'm just multiplying it because I was so excited, you know.
Have you read them forwards and backwards, probably?
Exactly, there we go.
Maybe you counted the resumes and the answers as two different items.
That's possible.
That's, that's, well, and to Barbara's point, yeah, if I'd had 21, Kim, I'd have still been reading by now because they were so thorough. And to Slaven's credit, they, they cut it down to this, the first cut and then they requested a follow-up letter to specific questions about Durango that were formulated from their, from current concerns, our financial situation, our budget issues, our city man, our lack of a city manager for a period of time, our lack of a city finance director for a period of time. And so, and all those things, direct responses by those 10 candidates to those questions was very thorough. And, you know, whether I liked the candidate or not and their qualifications, I thought that their responses uniformly were, they took this application very seriously, whether I think they're a great candidate or not, it was, I, I have to give them all credit. Everyone was virtually, you know, well, whether they're a good candidate, they were good writers and they had great backgrounds. And so I think Slaven's is, to Barbara's point, was a thorough process and, and we're getting a well-vetted list of candidates, so.
Ah, you know, Dean, you know what it was? It was 11 candidates.
Yeah, well, they're, and it's still open. As of right now, the, the official statement is open until filled. And so, yeah, there was, actually, an initial 10, one dropped out and we received another application that was that second little package that we're aware of. So, so I think we're at a net 10 at this point, but you could be right. I, I'm, I'm going to go count right now and make sure I got them up, but thank you. And any other thoughts on, any other comments for the good of the city or anything we need to inform the public? With that, I'd like to close this meeting, a Durango City Council meeting of June 2nd and next year, next, next meeting, I'll be a year older, so thank you for that.